Welcome to the City Council meeting. Wyreka City Council meeting. Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Please silence your cell phones if you have them with you tonight. Public comments, this is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no actions at this time during the public comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. I read it. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regard to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Are there any public comments at this time? Yes, sir. Please step up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Greg Luther. I'm a visitor. My wife is a travel nurse and she's currently doing an assignment over at Fairchild Hospital where she does labor delivery. And so we've been here for a little over a month. We'll be here for about another three weeks before we go on to our next assignment. And we've thoroughly enjoyed being here in this town. However, as y'all know, there's always a but.
I was gonna say however is, yes.
The one thing that has kind of concerned us, because we come across it several times a week because my wife works at the hospital, is the intersection at Bruce in Oregon. The stop signs are backwards. You have a major street feeding into a hospital that has stop signs while a cross street does not. And especially people from outside the area such as us or some of the patients that are going to the hospital will be unfamiliar with that area. You know, to be blunt, I basically ran the stop sign one time because I did not realize it was there because of cars that were parked in the area. A few other times, yes, we've stopped, but you know, when you start to start up again because of, there's a lot of cars on this side of Oregon. They can be hard to see because of the amount of cars parked there. It's a very difficult intersection to get across. And I don't know if a four-way stop would really be much better because there are, again, people that are on the way to the hospital, they're in a hurry. And you know, their main concern is getting to the hospital. I spoke earlier, the young lady at the back said that y'all are aware of this, but sometimes it just needs to be reiterated, especially from people that are not in the area because we're the ones that is probably gonna affect the most. And I'd hate to see an accident where somebody might get hurt there. So anyway, but other than that, we have thoroughly enjoyed being here in y'all's town.
Wonderful. Welcome. And thank you for coming and speaking up about that issue. We appreciate it. Thank you. Any other speakers? Don Marie.
I'm Angie. This is Wyreka. And, okay, fire danger. Big deal, huge deal. Because fire doesn't just stop at county lines. It doesn't just say, oh, that's county property. I just went to Etna to get my mom yesterday. And on the way out, it's shocking. The grass, that's all, dry, all the way out of town. And you know, once it catches fire, it, as we know. I do know that, you know, you turn on West End and I was mightily yapping about that. On this side it's really good. Walmart side, not so much. Not surprising. Hospital behind there, not surprising. You know, it's way high. And something needs to be done about all of this. You know, I know that you guys can only do so much. However, you know, what are you gonna do if the county allows your town to be burned down? And I've been on Farnsworth County, but I need you all also. You know, the city manager would help a lot if he would speak to the county and let them know that they got a problem and they need to deal with it. And then firecrackers, we need to do, I mean fireworks. We need to do something about fireworks in this town. It's crazy.
You mean after Fourth of July?
I mean Fourth of July period. Why bother? You know, why don't we do this in the wintertime? Seriously.
Fourth of July is in summertime, but yeah.
It doesn't have to be firecrackers. It's just all of a sudden we decided it needed to be. There's lots of places who have banned fireworks at all because of this. California needs to get on the bandwagon. It's crazy. I mean, for, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Don Marie. Any other? Yes.
I could make one comment.
My name is Nita Stilwell. It was wonderful that we had all the water behind the dams with this fire going so close. Like one lady said Tuesday night that the helicopters and, well, the helicopters mainly, came over and pulled a lot of water out. And the people, SWCA, that are helping with the dams, I guess, they were talking about KRRC having huge tubs full of water. That won't work.
Thank you, Nita. Any other comments from the public? Yes, Lorenzo.
Yeah, Lorenzo Love, Anderson Street. I live about a hundred feet from Oregon and Bruce. And it's, there is a problem there. There haven't been accidents there. People trying to get to the hospital. That's one of many intersections in this town that needs to be fixed. You need to survey all the intersections in town and come up with a rational plan under current traffic conditions, not fifty years ago when the street signs were originally put there. And the one that really gives me is Oregon and Minor Street. That desperately needs to be a four-way stop. But what I mostly hear is about fireworks. You let every child, every drunk, every psychotic in town fire off incinerary devices during the hottest, driest time of the year. What's more important, let people do that or preventing the city from burning down?
Thank you, Lorenzo. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Item number one, discussion possible action consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted upon by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. Item A is approval ratification. Oh, the city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from July twenty-second, June twenty-second through July nineteenth, 2018. And then B, approval of minutes of the meeting held June twenty-first, 2018. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve one A and B as stated.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number two, discussion possible action. Adopt a resolution approving requests associated with a special event known as the Siskiyou Scenic Bicycle Tour to be held on May fourth, 2019. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Crystal Timminkin, One Thousand Eighth North Street in Wyreka. I am here on behalf of the Rotary Club of Wyreka, which has actually sponsored the Siskiyou Century Bicycle Tour for over thirty years. Recently, there have been a lot more fires and severe smoke in September, the second weekend in September when we have traditionally done the Siskiyou Century. And so we have made a decision to move it to the springtime. And we're going to do it the first Saturday in May where Siskiyou County is green and beautiful. We're also altering the routes and altering the starting and finishing spot. Over the years, there have been as many as three hundred riders in this event from San Francisco to Portland. And you know, it's a great way to spotlight our county, but especially Wyreka. It initially was started at Greenhorn Park when the event was first begun. And then it moved to the Fairgrounds and we would like to bring it back to Greenhorn Park. And so the event would be on Saturday, May fourth. And we'd like to allow camping in Greenhorn Park the night before and the night of the event. And also beer sales by the Etna Brew Pub, which they have agreed to do that. And also T-shirt sales. And we will be having a meal there after the ride. There will actually be a number of different rides, five different lengths. The long ride will be eighty-one miles that goes out in Chasta Valley and then around Irongate and Cocko Lakes. Maybe they can view this before the lakes are gone and get a little enjoyment of the scenery that's there. All the rest of the rides go through Chasta Valley and come back to Wyreka. And I think it's a great advertisement for the city. We even have a really short ride, an eight-mile ride that's designed for families that goes through the town of Wyreka. And I think it'll be a very enjoyable event.
You finally came up with a ride. I could go on.
Yes.
Four miles.
So we renamed the Siskiyou Scenic Bicycle Tour and the routes actually may change every year.
And I see that, is that the eighty-six mile ride that goes up to Cocko Lake?
Yeah, I like how you said that that was the long one, but not the sixty-nine mile?
Yeah. There's, yeah, eighty-one, sixty-nine miles, thirty-nine, twenty-one.
Twenty, yeah. Excellent.
Yes, certainly. Norm, you know this lady?
Yeah.
I know, I know. They're related.
I thought you were gonna try to have just three rest stops. I count six rest stops, is that right?
There are.
Six.
So is that gonna be a problem to staff that many of them?
I believe they will have enough people to staff those. And the Jefferson Mountain Bike Association has also agreed to help us.
Oh, great. And other rotary tubs also usually help out. And it'd be great, like Montague.
Yeah. You know, the Montague Rotary Club and the Scott Helling Rotary Club have helped us with events before.
They have. I think this is great.
Me too.
Anyone else have any comments? And so the date is set. It's May fourth.
May the fourth be with you.
May the fourth. May the fourth be with you. Any other comments? I think this is a great idea. So this is something for our, for the portion that's in our city, of course, beforehand, we'll need to lay that out just like we do with like Gold Rush Days, right? We'll have to do a, we'll approve it. But the rest of the part that goes through the county, you might have to go to the Board of Supervisors for that part.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, that sounds great.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, it does sound, and in May, it should be cooler and the air should be cleaner and it will be green, right? I think that's a great idea. Good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number two. You want a resolution?
I'll make a resolution that we approve the request associated with the special event known as the Siskiyou Scenic Bicycle Tour to be held on May fourth, 2019.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, anybody against it? No? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, very nice ladies. Thank you. Okay, item number three, discussion possible action. Adopt a resolution approving requests associated with a special event known as the Wyreka Union High School Cross Country meets. Would you like to step up to the podium? Thank you. We have some great things tonight.
Hi, I'm Erin. I'm board Wyreka High School. I'm cross-country and head track coach. We are back this year looking to put on two cross-country invitationals. I moved the first one, the cross-country challenge, used to be the week before, but because of the smoke, I'm trying to push things back just a little bit in the hopes that it might be a little bit clearer. But that would be the Wyreka Cross Country Challenge on Friday, September fourteenth. And then we have, I believe it's our thirty-second annual Wyreka Elks Invitational. So it's changed names based on sponsors over the year, but it's pretty exciting that we're still able to get roughly three hundred athletes here competing, anywhere from Redding all the way up to Southern Oregon. And we've even had one team in the past from Alaska. So it's pretty exciting. And we've included the middle school, elementary school divisions over the last, I would think it's been seven years now. And so we're building up on the middle school and trying to work on that feeder program into the high school program, which, you know, it's all there. But anyways, and October thirteenth is that Wyreka Elks invite, and that's a Saturday. We use all the facilities on the Lower Greenhorn. That is our start and finish. I've spoke with the soccer, Northern Siskiyou Soccer, and have alerted them to the dates that I have proposed. And it looks like they're on board to work with us with the soccer field because that's our start and finish location. And then the map, I believe, is included and it shows the trails that will be part of the course. And I did notice on the front page of the encroachment.
I'm sorry, I don't see a map.
Oh.
We don't have a map. Does anybody have a map? No? She has a map. Yeah, you can do an air map.
Same thing, I included it in my packet. I don't know why you don't have it in your packet. But basically, it goes along, I know you guys named it different things. I name them differently. It's the basic trail that goes past the outbuildings. And then it goes up the hill to the, what is that, the Humbug? And then we go kind of about a hundred meters on that and then we drop back down. And then we go through, I think it's called the Goldfoles Gold Trail around that side. And then we basically go around the lane and back. So it's a five K. And we, I did notice on the front page of this agreement that it did state that we would be using the upper Greenhorn parking lot, but it's actually the lower Greenhorn parking lot.
We'll change that.
Yeah.
Right, that's an easy correction.
Yeah, it's an easy. Other than that, the other thing would be that Wyreka Elks for their invitational will be having their, what do you call it, truck wagon. So they'll get the proper paperwork and all of that again to service for drinks and food during that invite. But the first invite will not have any vendors out there.
Oh, no vendors. That's on the September fourteenth when there's not?
Correct. No vendor on the fourteenth. And that's pretty much it. I don't know thirteen questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Sounds like two good events.
Yes, we're looking forward to hopefully the air quality. Yeah, we had canceled the challenge last year because of the fire. Yeah, so we're hoping, fingers crossed, that it works in our favor this year.
Well, thank positive cleaner.
Considering what they were just talking about too.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Positive clean air thoughts. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, then I accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving requests associated with the special events known as Wyreka's Cross Country meets.
Thank you.
Okay, Duane. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You know, I have one question.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Robert.
So there's an age limit, isn't there? So Norm can't run.
Norm can just say yes.
He can't run, right?
No, he can run. He can run up, down, around, whatever you wanna do.
This man runs in everything.
I know, but you have to give him a T-shirt.
No problem. Doesn't do. In fact, I could probably work out a special race for Norm.
Sounds like a deal. Thank you. Thank you, Pam. We appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, as discussion presentation code enforcement progress. So it looks like Matt? No.
No, mayor members of the council.
That's not in charge of, oh, I'm sorry. It's Willow, of course. Come on down, Willow. Has everybody met Willow?
This is Willow Martindale. She's our code enforcement officer.
Yes.
So she's out informing the people in the community when, what they need to do if they are out of compliance with the code. Recently, there's been a emphasis on we debatement and that is still continuing because not all of the properties are cleaned up. And I'm gonna keep talking as she's setting up the technology.
Okay.
And just indicate that I think it'd be an interesting idea to have the Norm Challenge Race.
I like it.
Which has nothing to do with we debatement or code enforcement, but would still be fun.
I like it. I think we should call it the Shatsky Run.
Oh, there you go, Shatsky Run.
We could even have a contest for naming it.
Well, that's true.
Although you may have already decided who wants it. Anyway, so we're trying to get the technology loaded up here so that we can.
It was working.
This afternoon, of course.
Maybe it works better on that one.
Two hours, half an hour.
Half an hour, yeah, so.
Do we still not have them both working, all three?
Yeah, how come they aren't working?
From my perspective, they, it's.
They work just fine because they're looking at this one.
Well, no, it seems random when I set it up so I bring in people that know more. And if you notice, I am not involved in this right now because I know less.
You're not the IT person.
No, I am not.
And neither is Rhonda. Rhonda, you're the IT person.
This one gets all of us. I told the city that afternoon.
Not good.
It's brought us all to our knees.
They all used to work, all three of them.
Yeah. They will. It's just not the reliable.
We had it on all three of them.
Did you really?
Yeah, because I didn't want this to happen.
Mayor, did you want to, while they set it up, did you want to take the next agenda item as? Probably, oh, oh, there you go.
Oh, this one's working.
It's working.
Yes. That one has no signal, but this one's working.
Is there a game on?
Yeah, it says Google Play.
Where they were, yeah.
Did you want to take the, we could take the next agenda item? I'm not expecting that to take too long and just let them work on it.
Cindy's present, doing the presentation on that one. She's kind of busy.
Oh, well.
That's true.
Okay.
It's Matt and Cindy.
Move on to six.
How about item number six? This one should be an easy one.
Okay, discussion possible action. Appoint Mayor Jones Smith Freeman as voting delegate to the 2018 Annual League of California Cities Conference to be held September twelfth to the fourteenth, 2018 in Long Beach, California. Any questions?
Oh, we're happy to send you. Well, wait, that didn't come.
But I will, but I will come back.
Okay.
One of the things I wanted to mention is that the mayor is involved in groups that is working on trying to get more attention paid to rural issues and small cities. She could probably talk more eloquently about that, but that is something that we're hoping that the league will move in that direction. There are some people in leadership roles that are with some smaller cities. So we're rather encouraged by that. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah, there's a group that's working on a rural cities workshop. Or no, not workshop. What are they calling it? Rural cities, not a consortium.
Actually, at this point, it is referred to as an issues group.
Issues group, right. And so the mayor of Mount Chasta and myself and Jessie Lauren is a city council member from Willow's.
Winters.
From Winters, yes. And she's been working on it too, but we're very fortunate because the vice president, which will be the incoming president this year, next year, is Jan Arbuckle, who is on the city council for Grass Valley. And she's backing us on this. And she's on the executive board. So they took it, they took the issue to the mayor's and council members meeting. It was held last month. I couldn't attend. And they could not believe the room was packed with rural cities that really want to be better represented. So that should be, that should be really good. And then the other thing is, is that I'm also there as a rep. I have to go to the meeting on the Housing, Community and Economic Development Subcommittee. And our meeting is going to be down there. So that should be interesting. And evidently, I just got an email today that said that there's going to be two, at least two more resolutions that will be coming up for a vote. So as soon as I get the verbiage for that, I'll pass it on to everybody so you all know.
This is perfect. You love this stuff.
I do.
He speaks to me.
Yes, she does.
I do, I do. So, so it's a recommendation and a requested action. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we appoint Mayor Jones Smith Freeman as the voting, as the voting delegate. Are we sending you somewhere too? To the 2018 Annual League of California Cities Conference to be held September twelve, fourteen, 2018, Long Beach, California.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So I'll go and any of you are welcome to go if you like and I'll bring back a report. Okay, do we have a presentation yet, Willow? Can you get the presentation without that?
I could. I'm visual.
I can see that. I can see that, but the audience can't see it.
Well, she's worked on her presentation. Maybe we can, there's the, oh, I see, it's staff reports.
Well, I've got, the next item has to do with something Councilor Vacheko brought up about ten months ago.
Okay, we could talk about that.
Yeah. So I had, I had requested to put that on the, on the agenda.
Right.
One year post approximately. And the reason was because I figured, well, before we do something, let's see what other people have done and let's see what the results were. So interestingly enough, they're not, they're not too far ahead. So interestingly enough, they're not, they're not too far ahead, they're not ahead enough to where we can get any useful data from them. And so, probably on this issue, my last piece will be to, you know what's coming? Put this on the agenda one year from today. So it's gonna be, it will be the second farthest out agenda item ever put on a city council meeting, again by me.
You do, you do realize you're gonna have to come to that meeting.
I was gonna say.
I'm gonna call you.
You're gonna call me.
I will.
You'll have to present it.
Well, give me the data and I'll present it, so hopefully, hopefully at that point we'll have that, we'll have the data because I think it's, I think it's just a smart move for the city to do, for us to just continue to wait and see what, what the results are with other cities. Again, it was, it was, those that have police departments, you know, what happened, what happened there. Those that have schools, you know, are you seeing any, any bizarre spikes there?
Hospitals, what's hospitals?
Hospitals.
Crime increase.
Traffic accidents, I mean, everything, so if you see spikes.
Other side of the coin, the good side, if there was any positive tax revenue from it. Did it encourage other businesses, both sides of the coin.
Yep, definitely. And it'll be difficult, you know, data, data, you can read data any way you want, there's an expression that, that, you know, some people use data as, as, like a drunk uses a lamppost more as sporting for illumination. You know, so you have to be careful how you read it, you know, how you, how you make the determination, there could be a spike that doesn't make any sense, but if there are spikes on several levels, and it should, you know, you can, you can attribute that to some, I don't know. We'll just have to take a look at the data at that time. So, is everyone okay with?
And I do know that you've reached out to the communities and that we just, we really haven't gotten anything back.
No, the, the discussions I had with the city managers have been pretty much like, almost exactly what you said, which is that we really don't have any data. I couldn't get ahold of the people at the school district probably because they were thinking, what am I gonna tell this guy? And so I think it would be appropriate to try it another year, and so we're shooting for the second meeting in July, is that what you're looking for?
In twenty nineteen.
And I don't even know what day that is, but I'm gonna pretend that I do.
I could look it up for you. I could look it up.
I'm gonna pretend I'll be here.
You'll be on vacation, I bet.
Along that note, I just read that Dunsborough approved putting it on the ballot for this November to tax it, so. May have some indication from Dunsborough if they're part of the program.
It's July eighteenth of twenty nineteen.
Oh, I went the wrong way, okay.
It's July eighteenth is the second Thursday, because July fourth is the first Thursday.
Oh.
Ah, interesting, huh? So July eighteenth, be there or be square.
He's writing it down, pretending to.
Pretending, right, right. Development workshop scheduling, council member Ken.
Yes, so I've put a lot of thought into this, and actually, I'm gonna try to take this in another direction, actually, we're going to still work on development issues on the city, but I'm actually gonna go through, being my resources, through the Ciski Builders Exchange, we're actually gonna pull them together, get the contractors together, and I'm actually gonna actually get some information more from them, what they would like to see, and, and narrow it down, and then bring that back to us and present that way. So that way, that way we're not occupying so much of staff's time, I don't think we need to send staff and start figuring out all these different building codes and all these different things. We need to figure out what the ones are mostly affected by, on, in building, and our general contractors would know that mostly.
So I have, I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
So when you say that the, the group is called the Ciski.
Builders Exchange.
Builders Exchange. Not everyone has to be a member, is that correct?
No, no, correct.
So is there any way that, that you can reach out to, reach out to other people?
Yeah, yeah, we are actually, we're gonna, I'm gonna resource all the, all the contractors in Ciski County.
Cause I don't want, cause like when we rely on the, on the chamber to come to us about businesses, like.
No, no, I'm actually gonna go through the list of all the general contractors, and not only here in Waireka, but in South County too, to see what their issues are in Mount Shasta, in Weed, and those other areas too, not just our Waireka area too, just to see what their battles are there, and what ours are here, so. Narrow it down and get it to a better, easier spot that we can work with.
With time constraints for everyone, cause if you go through this with every contractor that calls you, you might wanna have Alice create some kind of form, minimize it down to one page maybe?
Looks like they got the genie back in the bottle.
Okay, that's, that's great, go, go ahead.
I just wanna mention to the audiences that it's behind your head.
Yeah, sorry.
We're sorry about that, and we're not responsible for any neck problems. And you may stand up if you wish, at the, on the side, since there are too many of you if you want.
Code enforcement progress, Willow. Welcome, Willow, this is your first presentation.
So as Steve introduced, I'm Willow Margo, I'm the code enforcement officer for the city. And as of January sixteenth is when I started with the city and became the full-time code enforcement officer to try and alleviate some of the complaints and other items that need a full-time code enforcement officer to maintain. So with that, I have had a lot of follow-through with a handful of smaller properties, but the biggest three properties that I've been working with, one being the Penberthy Mill, which was at the south end of town, and we were able to completely clean and clear that property off. Another one was on ten sixteen Swallow Circle, and I'll go into more detail on each of these so you can see pictures, and as well as fifteen thirty six Nugget Way. So the first one being the old Penberthy, or the old mill at the south end of town, as many of you know, it was riddled unfortunately with a lot of transient camps, there was a ton of dead down brush, there was spots for them to hide, there was massive fire hazards. As you can see, there's just a handful of pictures with the tents and the camps and the debris and the tarps and everything that was there. This is what, so those pictures were taken in the beginning of the year, right before we cleared the camps. These were all taken on June fifteenth, so this was after the clearing was done. The trees were limbed up, dead brush was gone, all the transient camps were then removed. The one last piece of that, that puzzle I'm still working on is with Steve Penberthy and Mr. York to clear the, the weeds. That's one of my main projects, and I actually have a phone call I'm gonna be having with him tomorrow. So that will ensue as soon as I can put Mr. York's feet to the floor. The next is ten sixteen Swallow Circle, and that is out on the camel tracks. And this particular property wound up actually going through foreclosure, and so there was a tarp for the garage door, there was an extreme amount of deferred maintenance, there was trash piles and debris all on the side yard. And with that, I wound up having the bank's code enforcement team actually come out, hang a new door, and they're the ones who actually removed, I believe it was about three pickup bed loads full of trash and debris off that property. And so the bank was actually very, very swift in working with me to get that cleaned up.
What, what bank was that?
So it was owned by Bank of America and a company called Carrington Mortgage Servicing is who was actually servicing that for Bank of America. So it's Carrington Mortgage Services who I was directly in contact with. And then, so those are before, and then this is what it currently looks like, so there's no debris pile, and a new garage door was hung, there still is some deferred maintenance, the fascia boards need to be painted, and that sort of thing needs to be fixed up, and that will probably come with the new owner, as it's, like I said, it went through foreclosure.
Curious, do you have any, have you had any feedback from any of the neighbors?
Um, I haven't had any, the only thing that I get is when people come in and they say, we're so excited that you're here, we don't imp you, but we're so excited that you're here. So that's, that's been the feedback that I've gotten, I've gotten a couple thank you notes when I've taken my time to go out to a property and kind of walk through what needs to be done on their property. I've gotten thank you notes, I've gotten a lot of that kind of positive feedback.
Good, nice.
Great.
The next property is fifteen thirty six Nugget Way. This has been an ongoing problem for the city for the last few years, until I got, here in January, the last contact with that property was earlier in the month with no avail unfortunately. So with what wound up ensuing with this particular property, there was daily fines that wound up happening because there was no contact with the owner. I sent out, I had countless citations, countless notifications, and we wound up actually going to a public hearing with our hearing officer, Dave Mason, and he wound up granting the city the request of the fines that were levied against the property as well as the continued abatement issue wasn't cleaned up, then it could ensue an additional fines. And so I'm still working with the property owner and cleaning it up, however, it was a successful hearing with the hearing officer Dave Mason. So that was a reward in itself, just knowing that the process actually does without a work.
So do you go, do you go with, with YPD or anything, I mean, something like, someone that's not, they're a cooperative?
On the properties where I feel I'm gonna have a problem, yes, I do call out a civil standby, or I'll have the animal control officer go with me to start. Once I'm able to build rapport or relationship with that person, then if I feel I don't need that anymore, then I will no longer call out a civil standby to go with me. But yes, multiple times on a lot of my outings, I do have a YPD, or I do have this animal control officer go with me, just for my own personal safety.
Good. May I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Is this a rental, or is it?
No, this is.
Owner occupied?
Yes, this is an owner occupied property. I had a long conversation with her after the hearing in regards to how this whole thing happened, and being the hearing officer, and the fines and everything, and it wound up, you know, that she just, she got extremely frustrated, but then once she was able to vent and, and understand where we as the city were coming from, she was actually accepting of what had happened. And, you know, then I also found out, you know, unfortunately, she was going through financial difficulty, she too is on the verge of foreclosure. And I assured her, I said, you know, unfortunately, even though that is happening, there's still things that need to be followed, there's still regulations that need to be, that I still have to follow as well. And, you know, pointed her in the direction of assistance services that if that's what she needs, and she assured me that that's not the route that she wanted to take. But I said, you know, this entire thing honestly could have been completely avoided if you would have contacted me with the first notice that I sent you back in January. And so being that there was zero contact from her, with the exception of some rude vulgar phone calls to the other women in the office, not contacting me, so unfortunately, this is the route that this property wound up taking. It's few and far between that I'm getting this kind of pushback though. The next piece that I've been working on since the end of April is our weed abatement. And this has been a very challenging item to get through and pass. And by that, I mean, I went with one of my fellow employees out on June first, drove the entire city and wound up with close to two hundred non-compliant properties. So with that, I only had her to help escort me around while I rode and she drove. So the two hundred properties were then my sole responsibility to notify, to try and contact, and to try and get into compliance. And thank the Lord, the majority of them actually wound up voluntarily compliant.
Nice, oh, good.
Which has been fantastic. There have been a few that wound up on the naughty list, that wound up having multiple notices sent out, and wound up actually getting notices of violation, as I'm sure you've seen that there's still a couple that are out there that unfortunately have not gotten managed. And as far as the two, rather, three large properties that still don't have existing weed abatement, I can speak directly to the one on Shasta Avenue, I literally, at probably five fifteen, was on the phone with the owner of that property, and she has about four phone calls out waiting for the inundated weed abatement crews that we have in our town to get back to her. Unfortunately, because things got so bottlenecked right now, because everybody's scrambling last second versus when they should have started back in April and May. So it is in the works, along with the one at the Northview Estates, that one I'm also in the works, but then I have he was on his very last day before he got hundred dollar day fines because of the fact that they just let those notices go. I was able to actually make a phone contact, very apologetic, and has now understood that he has about five thousand linear feet of fire break that he needs to create, and he's aware of that, and is very willing and wanting to work and get it done. So, and as I spoke earlier too, I'm in the process of getting Mark York on the south end of town for Penberthy's property.
And he's the contractor, right?
Yes, he is, yes, he was the one who actually wound up doing a lot of the clearing of all the transient camps and everything. And so Steve Penberthy's just kept him on to do the weed, the weed abatement as well. So there has definitely been, it's definitely, like I said, been extremely challenging, however, with what I've learned in all of this, I know better to go for, for next year, being I'm hoping to move forward when the, initial notices go out, move forward when my inspections occur, and then also give a drop deadline to when basically your citations and everything begin versus trying to chase everybody down with the citations. So it's definitely been a learning experience.
Councilmember Shatsky have a question?
We had questions earlier tonight about the property by the hospital with high weeds, and also questions about property with high weeds near Rayleigh's and West Side Road.
So the property next to the hospital, sorry, let me interrupt, the property next to the hospital has in fact had all-in-one come out and do a forty foot perimeter. Any property over one acre, all they have to do is do a forty foot perimeter fire break around the entirety of the parcel. I have encouraged a lot of the people who have parcels over one acre to do a complete job and then maintain the forty foot perimeter, but they're not required to. So I do kind of nudge them in that direction, but unfortunately, that's not what they are required to do. As far as the properties on the south end of town, over by Rayleigh's, those I have, three with notices as of Monday will have notice of violation, which means they are in violation with the city code, and they have until the twenty fourth to either notify me or fix it, otherwise they are in daily citation status. I've been working directly with Rayleigh's to, one, clean out the transient camps along their section of Waireka Creek, and then once that section is cleaned out, they're able to actually go back through and finish their weed abatement. But being that they have, I went down and personally walked Waireka Creek last week, and it took us two days, and tagged every single one of the camps, and took pictures and notified and let the owners know what's currently there. And.
Hopefully you went with an officer.
Yes, I did, yes, I did. But yeah, so speaking directly to Waireka Creek and that area on that south end of town, every bit of that is private property, so with that, I have to notify the property owners, I have to let them know what's there, I have to get their compliance, and they're willing to sign a civil arrest warrant once and if those people decide not to leave. So it's not that it's not being taken care of or not being done, unfortunately, there's a lot of red tape that I have to go through before I can even start a lot of this to happen.
It's a process.
And that's the part that most people don't see or understand, they just want it done and taken care of, which I totally appreciate and totally understand, but I have to follow due process, otherwise that can get the city in trouble if I do not.
I agree. Just a second. So Don Marie, you have a quick question?
I just wanna say thank you so much, Willow, you are just amazing, I mean, you've worked hard and you've gotten a lot done, and you are a very valuable asset to the city, and my help, they pay you well.
Thank you very much.
They gave her a shirt.
She has a shirt, it says, code enforcement, city of Waireka. Oh, great. Any questions from?
I just wanna add the same thing, is I really appreciate her in this position and doing, and being aggressive as she is. I heard a lot of good comments on the aggressiveness of being positive and, you know, getting stuff done, so that's good. Lot of good comments on herself.
Right, we do appreciate her good work, and I know Steve really appreciates it, because now he doesn't have to go out on the ground and do that. But, good job.
Well, thank you very much, any other, any other questions?
Any questions?
Comedy is, keep doing it. Let's, let's try to get a hundred percent compliance in the city, cause it's very important, because we are in critical fire danger. I just saw, there's so many fires going up in Oregon now, they're calling in aid from Canada now.
Really?
Yes, I just saw that before it came over, I mean, this is getting very serious.
And as they've actually said that this is the first, or the worst start to our fire season in over a decade.
I didn't think we were friends with Canada.
The perimeter, that's a city policy.
Forty foot.
Yeah, so you guys can change that policy.
If you want me to, I'll start like the hospital. Correct?
Correct, yes, that is something that can be changed, because that is a city policy under the, the nuisance ordinance of nine point four seven point zero two zero, so if, if that in fact wanted to get more aggressive, that could be in fact changed.
I think that's something that we do need to review, honestly.
That's a, that's a good idea, and Nora, you sit on the Fire Safety Council, right, you go to their meetings? Is there something maybe you could do working with them to give us some advice on that?
Mention that next time, yeah.
We, we could look into that, I think there's a balance between, when you have some very large parcels, there's a, there's a balance there, and a lot of times what you're looking at, for example, when there was a fire out near the hospital, uh, when there was a fire out near the hospital, and I happened to be there at, at when it was getting put out, just for the record. What I was hoping to find out was that.
I was opposed when it was started.
I have been, yeah. I was hoping that, that for just to show the impact of tho, that forty foot thing, that somehow it had started right by the road and gone in so slowly that they were able to attack it. But it didn't, it started back in the shed further behind the forty foot thing, and they still got it out, and interesting enough, they were I think three public information officers that responded to that fire, because they were driving that way.
We're pretty fortunate, they were here.
They were, they were there, and for one of them, it was the first time that he pulled hose in, in like twelve years. Anyway, they, they helped out, I think our guys were probably the, the ones that helped put it out, but we have to give them credit for being.
I think there is a balance though, and I think maybe, you know, instead of just saying it has to all be cleared, you know, one of the options we may, maybe to consider is a, is a fire line be established around the perimeter so that, so that it doesn't jump. I mean, as opposed to, cause it's, you know, it could be expensive to clear an entire piece of property, if you establish a perimeter around the structure, forty feet around the structure, right, that's what that is.
Well, it's forty feet around your perimeter of your parcel.
Oh, okay, well, there was a fire line already there.
That's a fire line. Nina Stills had a question.
If you go up Lane Street to Southwest and turn left, you come to South and then you come to Jackson, there's a big huge hill up there that's full of trees, and it comes right down where the houses are. Do you do anything like clearing some of that stuff?
And right there, it can be kind of tricky, just because if it's, if that's right on the edge of the city-county order, I would have to refer that over to the county code enforcement and have them maintain that portion of it. But if it's within the city limits, you are supposed to have your trees limbed up, and you're supposed to have defensible space around your property, as well as making sure that if you have over an acre, you have your, your fire break perimeter, and then if you're under an acre, you're supposed to have your property cleared, so.
Well, I don't live right there, I live further down, I live on Hugh Street. The other end of Hugh. So I'm not, I'm not right up where that hill is with all the trees on it.
But if they're, if they're live trees and they're flourishing, we're not gonna require that they get cut down. If they're dead trees, then that's a different story, but if they're live flourishing trees, we do not require that they get cut down. And up there, I drive the city streets on a daily basis now.
You're talking about up Jackson Street, all the way up Jackson Street, is that what you're talking about?
Side of the hills where she's talking about.
But that's the one that, where you go up Jackson Street and it's the hill.
The whole hillside.
Probably a lot of that's in the county.
Yeah, part of that is, yeah.
Yeah, right in there, you get a little. Yeah, right in there, it gets a little, yeah, it gets a little dicey as far as city limits or county. You're right there on that line. So, yeah, if it is in fact in county, I, again, if there's a direct problem with somebody, the way that they're keeping their property, I would have to refer that to county, which I have done in the past. As far as if it's something, like a problem with somebody who they're currently keeping it within the city limits, I would have to go and specifically walk that property. But again, if they're, if they're live trees and there are just a lot of them on the hillside, I cannot require somebody to cut live trees.
Right.
I was just thinking that the base of the mountain.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it meets the city. Now, on a forty foot perimeter, what would that defensible space look like? Is it down to dirt? I mean, I'm just throwing this out so everybody knows.
Right, right now, no. I do have people though, that when it's not a high fire season or high fire warning, they will go and disc. So that would take it down to the dirt.
So what is required then, I should say?
It's no more than four inches.
I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that.
No more than four inches. But a lot of people will tend to disc when they have the larger parcels just because it's hooked to a tractor, disc and you're done.
Right. Dawn?
If we're looking at possibly changing that forty foot barrier, we'd like to know what other cities are doing. Whether they're having higher ones or lower ones, something like that, just so we can make an informed decision.
I think that the forty foot is not far off of what other cities do. I have seen, I call it apple or not apple, yeah, apple pie crosses. You know, where they, they might do another route through the middle and, and make a hot cross bun out of the whole property just because, just to slow down a little bit more, but not, not do the really big parcels. But we can check into that. We'll talk to the fire department. You know, even if, obviously, even if, if you do cut the weeds down, you know, fire can still go. It just slows it down tremendously. And what we're trying to do is give a chance so that the fire suppression crews can get there. And, you know, sometimes, quite frankly, if it cuts down the fuel, so maybe a cigarette thrown out the window or some other action, it won't, it won't ever start. But that's what we're doing is trying to play the, play the percentages to get it slowed down so that it's small for longer, if that's possible.
Well, you have to see where forty, where forty foot, a forty foot fire line didn't work. I mean, you know, you'd have to, where has a forty foot fire line not worked?
Weed?
Well, conflagration is something different. That's, that's, that's a.
Well, there was, there wasn't a forty foot fire line.
Well, it's because we're so close to houses there. That's true.
They didn't even have an opportunity to do a forty foot ride. So.
We're gonna get strong winds. It's hardly anything you can do.
Yeah, conflagration's.
Right, because there, there was a different kind of, there was a shady fire break there among the trees right below the middle school in weed. And the, I was there just a couple of days ago, and those trees are gone. They, they got burned up in the fire. But in that, in that firestorm, because that's what I think you should call it, it slowed it down just enough to where that's probably why.
They got control?
They, well, no, they didn't get control. They kept sweeping through. It actually torched a little tiny bit of the, the middle school. And then right past that is where it took out all the houses, which they've rebuilt now. But it slowed it down enough, probably so that people lived.
Oh.
Because if, if you remember, that was, it was a very near thing. And if you've ever heard our, we had some officers down there pounding on doors. If you've ever heard their stories about how close the fire was and how they got the people out, it's just, it was a very amazing that. So, so that's the kind of thing where the fire break didn't stop the fire. It slowed it down. I think that's what we're doing here is it won't necessarily stop the fire, but it will slow it down. But we can look at what other entities do and we can work with the, with the fire chief to try to come up with something. You know, there's, there's always balancing on, on whatever, whatever you do, but to see, see where, where we're at.
Well, I do like the idea of what you said, if it's maybe a big enough parcel that maybe they have to do a mid stream breaker or something through there to slow it down.
It seems to me I've seen that someplace else and I, I wouldn't be on tape where it was.
But Dawn Marie?
Oh, well, I have a question. You know, the fire that was by the hospital had gotten that grass. You know, those old people there that live in the Huron Page, my sister being one of them, they have one way in and that would have blocked their way. That fire was less than a football field away from my sister's trailer.
Wow.
And she has a blood clot from her knee to her, you know, forty two inches long. So she couldn't just hop out of her trailer and take off.
Yeah.
You know, so maybe some of these places need to be considered, I'm sorry about where this location is, it needs to be flattened.
Higher danger.
You know, completely. Because like I said, Huron Page, one way in. Those people aren't gonna be good. And, and if you go look around in there, the trees are, oh my gosh, it, it could take the whole side of the hill and they're all dead. So you need to give people time to get out, which means flatten that whole place. And doesn't the hospital own that area?
They do, and I've actually spoken with the assistant director of the hospital in extending where, because they did the forty foot break around the, the field essentially, and he's actually running that up and clearing all the way to the fence line.
Okay.
So I did, I did in fact contact the director and he is on the works of that. I don't, I don't know the timeframe of it being completed, but he said that that was already a concern for them and they were working on it. So thank you.
The other thing about the hospital is that they have provided another exit route out. It's dirt road, but there is another exit, that route coming out to the, I guess it'd be the north of that.
On the north side?
Yeah, the north side, so.
Good. They needed that.
Yeah, that, it's something that we've talked to them about before. They're, they're very conscious of it and so I've looked at that. You know, someday they might build a real road there, but right now it's a dirt road, so.
Well, it's a start.
It's a start, correct. And so they've worked with us.
Great presentation. Does anyone have any more questions?
No.
Thank you, Willow. And thank you so much for all your good work. We appreciate it. Yes. Okay, item number five, discussion possible action, adopt resolution authorizing the city to apply to the state of California for cycle four active transportation program funds. Enter into a funding agreement and designate representatives to sign related documents for the city of Waireka Green Horn Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Gap Closure Project. Is this Cindy or Matt? Matt's being very quiet in fact. Oh, hi Cindy, you're already there. You're fast.
Yeah, she's right there.
I think she had you, she had you thrown because she didn't walk down that way.
Yeah, you stuck around.
That must have been it. I was trying to be quiet.
Okay, Cindy.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Cindy Lynch, grants projects analyst for the city of Waireka. And we have seen this project before and we will see it over and over and over and over until the state sees fit to give us a hand with it because we love it, our public works director loves it, and we want it to happen. As you see in two thousand six, we adopted a bicycle transportation plan and we've been trying to get bike lanes throughout the city. Two thousand seven, we had stiff funds to complete some of these bike lanes, especially on Green Horn Road. We only had enough funds to complete part of that. And ever since then, the active transportation program has seemed like the best vehicle to complete the street at Green Horn between South Oregon and Green Horn Park on Green Horn Road.
Right, because the bicycle lane ends right there.
It ends right next to a school, which is really interesting.
Oh, Norm?
What I'm interested in is it's gonna complete our storm drain infrastructure to help the city comply with the stormwater MS four requirements.
It's, that's more about the curb and gutter and completing that.
Right.
Right, but that will help us comply.
It will help, yes, absolutely. That's, that's the goal, or one of them, one of many. Another, one, another goal is essentially to complete the street by putting in the bike lanes and putting in the curbs and narrowing that lane a bit so that it's less like a racetrack. The cars will just take off and go. They'll go the thirty five they're supposed to go on that street. And again, it does meet safety goals. It meets active transportation goals by trying to increase walking and biking from downtown to the park, which would be wonderful for everyone. And again, this is cycle four, and we've gotten this close on previous cycles. We have not met it because other people have had far more dangerous areas to be taken care of. And therefore, they were chosen over us. I attended a workshop in November for the active transportation program. And everyone was kind of discussing, Tammy Quigley was there from district two. That was great. Got to meet her, put a face to the, put a face to the voice. And we discussed what we didn't like about it, what we did like about the application and the process and the way the choices were being made. People got to give their input. And one outcome of that is that they've separated this into five strats, small, medium, and large infrastructure, and then they've got a mixed plan and infrastructure, and then just planning non-infrastructure projects. So we, we fall into the small category under a hundred, under one point five million for this project. As I put down there, we expect it to be around just, just under the one million dollar.
Nine ninety-five, mhm.
And.
I see that. And I also, and I also see that you're proposing to work with the California Conservation Corps?
Yes.
That's a great idea.
Yes, as, as much as possible. We want to include them. And I'll leave it to you if you have any questions for me?
Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city to apply to the state of California for cycle four active transportation program funds. Enter into a funding agreement and designate representatives to sign related documents for the city of Waireka Green Horn Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Gap Closure Project.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Thank you very much, Cindy.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that we already did item six and seven. Well, we have a portion of seven. Council statements. Oh, I should ask, our city manager, do you have any further on your report?
Oh, good. You got it already, so.
Okay, yes, we did. Okay, council member's statements and requests. Council member Kay?
Well, we already went over that briefly with that request, so.
No, I just meant like on the homelessness.
Oh, so we have a homelessness meeting today. We're working on a couple of things. Of course, looking at future funding and stuff like that to help with the issue. We're actually trying to get, you know, with, with all the entities in, in Siskiyou County and get a game plan, basically, for everybody to follow it, get on the same track. So we're working on that. We had good discussions on, on some of the positive things that have been happening, like what we witnessed here in Waireka, that we got a decline on some of the issues here due to good practices and law enforcement.
Oh, I think law enforcement's done a great job.
Yeah, oh, by far, by far, they've done. That's with, with also the help of Willow and everybody else too. This has been a big battle for everybody. It's the thing we gotta remember though, that just because we're pushing them out, doesn't mean it's solving the problem. So that's what we're also ultimately working on is to actually help solve the problem, not just push them out. So we worked on that. Other than that, I, we went, I went to the YMCA kind of warm, housewarming or whatever the party day, we wanna call it, and that was, that was well received.
Ribbon cutting, right.
Ribbon cutting, yes. And I seen you briefly on the way across the room there. It was good. It was well received. Lots of people there, good food. And if anybody has a chance to check out the YMC and all the major improvements they've done, I, I encourage it. It is awesome what they've done, expanded on it, and really made it a good facility now for the kids and people in general. So it's, it was awesome to see all the hard work that's went into that, mine included. So that was really neat to see that. I see that, you gotta see, we got a report that we got some, a few more things that are getting okayed through the planning commission and stuff too, so that was a good thing. And then we're also working on, as for my own business, we're working on the minor street station. We're doing overhaul on that. And that's gonna look really nice when it's all done too. Yeah, Margaret Dean owns that with a bunch of other places. And, and she's really putting some good effort into revamping the minor street station, so that's gonna, it's gonna look nice. It's gonna look real nice. We're doing a bunch of cabinets and whatnot in there. And just totally restructuring the interior of it and updating it, so it was much needed. Other than that, that's basically all I got to say.
Okay. Councilmember Pacheco?
I was also at the Y ribbon cutting and, and it's pretty amazing what, what they did. They, for briefly, the, the Y should have never have been even in Waireka. They have a requirement, a population requirement that we, we never, we didn't even come close to. And we, you know, from way back when, a group of people, it was preceded me, but they just said, we're gonna make this happen. They made it happen. And they've been making it happen ever since, and it's just a great organization. And in fact, the Mason's Third Sunday Breakfast, the upcoming one will be on behalf of the Y after mine, Scott. So that was fun. Attended the League of Local Agencies dinner. I will let Madam Mayor talk to that, except for the fact to say that there were mosquitoes there.
Big ones.
They love me. The feeling is not mutual.
They still prepared Alaskan mosquitoes. I can vouch for those.
Blood transfusion, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and then again, about the third Sunday breakfast, we just had a third Sunday breakfast this past Sunday, which I worked for.
You flipped, you flipped pancakes?
I, I was not the pancake guy. I was kind of the floater, so, you know, wherever, chief bottle washer, you know, removing the garbage, loading things up. So this last one was for Siskiyou County Search and Rescue. So, so it's always a good, it's always a good thing. It's always some good charity that we support. With that, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shesky?
Yeah, I attended the League of Local Agencies meeting in Dunsmere. The mayor can talk further about that. Tomorrow, we have a League of California Cities meeting in Mount Shasta tomorrow afternoon in the early evening, so. Two things that I wanna see is looking into the fireworks a little more, whether we can have an administrative thing to prohibit, you know, people blasting them off and causing, you know, damage like that. There's other cities that have made it administrative violation, so it doesn't, it's, it's a lot easier to deal with as opposed to a code violation or something. So that, that was brought up at a League of California Cities meeting that I went to. So it's something to look at. And the question is whether we should ban the safe and sane fireworks with, so I think we ought to have the capability to ban them in certain years if the fire danger is too great.
It's too dry.
And so, I mean, maybe they could be allowed sometimes, but other years have to shut it down earlier. If we know it's gonna be a bad fire season, you shut it down. So I mean, this is something I think we should look at a little further is the issues with fireworks. And I do think we should review the issue of whether a stop sign is needed at Oregon and Bruce because I've seen some near misses there myself. So there's a lot of traffic crossing. I don't know whether it meets the requirements, but it looks like it might meet the requirements to require it.
A four-way stop?
Right.
Can I, can I add to that? Are we, I know we discussed this, are we looking into more areas in Waireka that need stop signs and stuff? I know we've had this discussion. I know we've had this discussion and I don't know, has it run any further though?
We had a traffic committee meeting actually earlier this week to talk about, there's a bunch of steps to, to go through some of the areas where your average citizen thinks that there should be a stop sign, that they don't meet warrants, which is, and so that's what we have to look at. So we do get the traffic engineers involved in order to, to do that, so.
So what is the next step on some of these then, I guess?
I'll have to get back to you on that. Because we just had to be, we're gonna, we're putting some, did they get out already? Do you know? Some counters?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So, next step.
Before you finish up there, I, I wanted to say something else I forgot to tell you. It's about Paul Creek.
Okay, we'll finish this, our reports, and then, then you can speak. Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mayor Poten? Oh, Norm, are you done?
I'm done now.
Oh, you're done. All right, thanks. Thank you. Okay, Debbie?
I went to the Lola meeting also. Excellent food. I've never been to the city park in Dunsmere.
Neither.
Beautiful location, right on the river, so I wanna go back sometime. It was awesome. The Laffco meeting was canceled for this month. I'm hoping to get Steve there to come and answer some questions, so I'm paying attention. So, I'm paying attention, but they don't meet very often, so it's pretty much.
That was me, Steve?
Yeah, that's Steve.
All right, okay, good. Just chatting.
Yep, yep.
Just gotta give him a little lead time.
Uh, yes, yes, definitely. Um, don't forget the concerts in the park.
Oh, yes.
Support the events that go on here. What else is going on this weekend?
I will let you know.
Okay, and that's it for me. That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, so, yes, uh, the Wairega, uh, the YMCA open house was amazing and we are so fortunate. As, uh, council member Pacheco said, that we have that in our community. A concert in the park last week was awesome. I mean, it was great. There was really good participation, great band. And I am so pleased that Mechanics Bank that just purchased Scott Valley Bank is still continuing that program. And they announced that night that they're going to be donating ten thousand dollars for the fire victims. And they are also going, for Hornbrook, but for the fire victims in Hornbrook, the Klamathon.
Klamathon, yeah.
Uh, but they also said that anyone who donates toward the fire victims, they will match over beyond the ten thousand dollars, up to another ten thousand. So, that's pretty amazing. Yeah, that was, that was really great. Lola meeting was awesome. You heard all about that. And, uh, LTC, so we had a local transportation commission, um, and that's one of the places where we talk about the stiff money. Like when Cindy was talking about the, the bicycle lanes. Um, one of the things that we did at that meeting was we did approve to extend a route that goes a little bit further down I five to Castle Craig's, uh, to the park. To pick up the Pacific Crest Trail, the PCT travelers. And the, and one of the reasons we're doing that, because there was no way to get them up to Mount Shasta. And I know that Matt is what they call a trail angel, right, Matt? And that, so he literally and others go up to the trailhead and then bring people back to town. Well, this is a way for the trail, uh, for the hikers to get into, uh, Dunsmere, uh, Mount Shasta. We'd, you know, they can get up, uh, further, so.
It's when they cross I five.
Right.
At Soda Creek.
Right, it's at Soda Creek, right. I think so. Anyway, uh, it, it was, there was a lot of discussion on it. We ended up having it in a workshop, a special meeting, and then we voted on it at the last LTC meeting. And we did approve it as a pilot program for the summer. Uh, so far, the reports we've been getting is there's, you know, two and three. They've had one and two and three riders is all. Uh, and it adds about another fifteen, twenty minutes, not a whole lot. And we figured that the impact for the cost of that program is probably only about six hundred dollars. So, we went ahead and did it and we're trying to get the word out now that that's there. Uh, the League of Cities meeting, as, uh, somebody pointed out, so tomorrow, uh, in Mount Shasta. The Northern California Division, the Sacramento Valley Division they call it, of the League of Cities is going to be meeting at their quarterly meeting in Mount Shasta. At the park. Uh, and so there'll be people all the way from Sacramento, Rancho Cordova north, that will be coming to that meeting. And so, it's really nice that we get people from outside the area to come and appreciate. The meeting itself is taking place in Mount Shasta Park. Which is right across from the headwaters of the Sacramento River. People can see it, just comes out of the mountain, right there, out of the hill. That's pretty cool. Also, on Tuesday, we're having a Siskiyou Revitalization Network meeting. And, uh, I've been on this since its inception and it's all the cities and the counties working together to revitalize Main Street. To revitalize our communities, uh, and to bring, bring business into our, not Main Streets, but into our, our communities. So, I'm looking forward to that. And it's right before your TC two C, call your interpretive and information center.
Uh, ours is until the thirty-first this time.
Oh, okay, so it isn't right before then. Anyway, so I'm looking forward to that. So, that's Friday that we're going there. And then on Saturday, the district governor for our area of Rotary will be down here. Uh, and he's going to be, um, he's going to be getting a tour of our area. And then at the Martin Ranch, Heidi Martin's Ranch, uh, is going to be a meeting out there. So, that's going on this weekend too, on Saturday. If anybody's interested, let me know. So, that's the end of my report.
That point, um, you also, uh, I, I don't remember the details, but I think, uh, at the, when we were in Dunsmere. They mentioned that, uh, they got a, a trail going that no longer has to, uh, parallel over.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, to the falls.
Right.
It's not finished yet. They're hoping they'll finish sometime in August.
Right.
But that's worth noting to be aware, so that's, that's an important change.
So, for those of you that are familiar with Moss Bray Falls, how many of you know about Moss Bray Falls? Moss Bray Falls is a beautiful area, but there's no way to get there except for to walk in and walk over the railroad tracks. That goes over the river and it's very dangerous.
An active railroad track.
It's an active railroad track, yes. They, the trains come through there every single day, several times. So, they now, the city of Dunsmere has a plan to build a trail that will not be on the railroad tracks. Which I think is excellent. I don't know, that's, that's a really good thing. Hopefully saves some lives and, yeah, anyway. A lot of people went out there. Good memory, good memory. Now.
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
What day is today?
Nita wanted to talk to us about Tuesday night. They mentioned, um, a Fall Creek.
And they were, and this lady, uh, Chelsea said that there were three ways that KRC was going to do Fall Creek. Um, they're gonna move it maybe, all I can remember was the third one. They were going to move the thing, the Fall Creek and how we get the water up a little bit. Um, but they're gonna be doing a bunch of stuff, so we're not gonna have water flowing for.
Oh, no, oh, no, we will. Trust me, we're working on this.
Oh, we will?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Nita, the, the three options they discussed at the meeting was below, above and move it up the river.
Right.
That's the ones they were talking about at the meeting.
And that's for the conveyance.
Well, I just remembered the up one.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I don't like the up one so much, but, but we are talking to them about that. And we will have water. We, we have been assured by both Pacific Core as well as KRC that we will have water. They will not take our water.
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion items? I think we're done?
You have a closed session?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Does that actually say that or?
We'll adjourn to closed session.
Okay, adjourn to lo, closed session. Thank you.